Still in progress. You guys thought of it?
Down in, yeah.
That's not going off the road. Yeah. So for the most part, you're looking at seed. And like I said, we We checked Sarasota the other day. I pulled up the new one when I got here. They're open 8 to 4. Our landfill, my landfill, is open 6 to 4 every day because they help out waste management. Because they run their trucks all day long. And then they be parked in front of the gate at 0600 to empty and go. But what I'm thinking, tell me not to mention but let's say for next year. That was, I'm still going for a county. Is that correct? Two counties, three counties. We don't want to crap up the road, thank you.
Okay, we need to start our meeting. We stand with a prayer and pray to Father in heaven, we thank you right now for this hour. We thank you for this opportunity. Bless your name because your name worthy to be blessed. And Father, we thank you for what you've done for us, where you care and us to and where you lead us from. We thank you right now. Fathers, we come, we done praying for the world peace. And we just bless those people in Ukraine and Russia. Fathers, they can get it together and live peacefully. Thank you now for what you've done. Father, we pray for the sick and the shut in, those in prison, round, those that's free. Those that walk the streets all night long, we pray for them too. Father, then we pray for this council, permission. We pray for the administration. We pray for everybody that's involved. We'll be able to work and come to some solution. Help us now, fathers, only you can do and you will do. And we thank you for what you're going to do now. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, before we start our meeting, we have one or two housekeepers. And the conference line has been set up. The number is 1-917-900-1022. Access code is 32347. This is not a toll-free number. You may be subject to loan dissonance charges. Call your loan dissonance plan. Chairperson opened the meeting for public comment. Please follow the below instructions. If you wish to speak, please dial 5. The moderator will unmute your line when he returns to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address and you will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes. Three minutes for comments. And a commenter may only speak once or one time for each agenda item. With that being said, the board to discuss solid waste operation.
Commissioner Beatty will be here in just a few minutes. Let me check on Commissioner Beatty. No answer, but I texted.
Board to discuss solid waste operation. You want to go first?
I can follow up on some information that was requested at the last workshop.
Okay.
If it pleases the board. So there was a discussion about the potential cost savings if every roll-off site was closed one day a week. And so I ran some numbers and I used, I tried to use average, average numbers just so, you know, it didn't become too difficult. But it looks like the approximate annual savings if we closed every site one day per week would be $60,693. And that is a very rough number.
$60, what?
$693. Because as you know, if we reduce the hours that the sites are operational, all you're saving is your hourly labor. Your overhead remains the same. The only, the only true variable cost is your hourly labor for the roll-off site attendance. Your administration costs are the same. Your, all your other operational costs stay the same. And you would not reduce the tonnage. You would just reduce the number of days the sites were open.
One question. Did you say by closing those sites? You're talking about those that are open seven days a week?
No, sir. That number, if we only closed the sites that were open seven days a week was closer to $40,000 a year. But what I was, I believe what I was requested to bring back to the board were the potential savings if every site closed one day a week. And that would leave some sites that were, would only be open two days a week.
Some sites, no.
Well, if you closed every site one day per week, Gary put sites are open just three days.
Salem? Salem, Iirdue. And 1498 is open four days.
So those two, those sites would only be open if you take that approach.
1498 open four days?
Salem, Iirdue. That's three sites, right.
And everything else is open seven days?
Yes.
Salem, Iirdue. Sorry, 1498?
1498.
And you say the difference between only closing those that are open seven days a week is what amount?
So if we, it would be a difference of about $20,000 a year.
And that's because of not paying that labor?
Correct. So if you consider, so this is an average cost per hour for a site attendant at $11 per hour with the fringe, it translates to $1346 an hour. Are your savings?
$1846 per hour?
For your, your hourly rate and your fringe. Because, and that's, that's for part-time attendants who do not have health insurance benefits. No, I just used the part-time because I didn't want to overinflate the number. So as I said, that's, that's a pretty rough draft.
So I may ask if I understand that for those sites that are operating seven days a week, that's a different personnel?
Yes.
Or are those full-time positions?
So, it depends.
You got three full-time.
Right.
Well, two and then 1498, six-four. You got Salem. I mean, Sting Hatchie and Carlton.
Are full-time. And both, and just one attendant at Carlton is full-time? Okay.
How many sites do we have all again?
Nine. Nine sites. Any questions about that? So obviously, if you wanted to, for ev, so if you wanted to close sites twice, two days a week, you would just double that number to get a rough estimate of the cost savings.
If you do that, you're saying you're only going to operate these three sites one day a week?
I'm just saying. I'm not suggesting we do that.
No, I'm just trying to understand the logic.
I don't, I was, I was asked to bring back the dollar value for closing sites one day, two days, whatever. So one day, every site is $60,693. So that would mean two days for every site would be double that. And of course, obviously, there's some numbers in between. So if you only close the sites that are open seven days a week, it would be somewhere around $40,000. If you close every site one day a week, it's $60,000. And then for every day that you add on, you can, you know, it's somewhere between the $60,000 and $120,000. The other question that was asked by a citizen, and he's asked it twice, is the approximate cost per mile for our trucks. And that is estimated for the, the vehicle cost and the drivers only to be somewhere around $2.43 a mile. And that's again, a very rough number.
You, include fuel?
Yes, sir. So what I did, this is how I came at that number. And that's why I say it's so rough. We don't, we don't use the cost accounting method here. So what I did was I asked for a report that showed September fuel. Only diesel was 2,061 gallons. Our average mile per gallon for the, the roll-off trucks is five and a half miles per gallon. So that's how I came up with the projected number of miles per year, which is what I used to come to the approximate cost per mile. So we calculated the driver's salaries and wages, diesel fuel, lease payment for one truck, insurance, just the auto, the general auto and the auto liability, the repair and maintenance of auto. And the total was $337,000 and some change. And, and, and so the approximate annual miles is 138,996 for three trucks. Because the other truck and driver are charged to recycle. So that's how I came to that number. And then the other request, I believe, was to do some investigating into curbside pickup. And I don't have, I'm hesitant to quote numbers from other counties that may not be, that may not be accurate as far as what we could expect to pay. But I can tell you that Swanee County, back in April, I believe, advertised as an RFP. And I will say that if that's something that we wish to do, it would certainly be pretty simple to customize. And we could ask for proposals for one time a week pickup, twice a week. We could ask for quotes for operate, operating a site to take bulky items, C and D, lamps over a certain size. And we could certainly ask for different options. And I, but I don't know if our present assessment would cover that. Because if you think about it, Taylor County geologically, geographically is a big county. But I think, I'm afraid that something would drive, that cost would be density. So if you have, you know, approximately 9,500 households who pay the assessment and it's spread over a big county, I don't know what that would do to the costs in today's market with fuel and, you know, minimum wage and all that. I don't know that it could be operated. I'm not saying they wouldn't be more efficient, but I don't know if our, if our new assessment would cover that. If you're talking about curbside service. Now Gary's going to try to help me remember. And I look back in the minutes. I do know that Mr. Lakey brought a number to the board some, some number of years ago. Commissioner Moody, do you remember what that number was? For, for curbside pickup? I want to, we were thinking it was somewhere over $200 a household.
That was perhaps over 200.
Well, but I don't know if they would, if they would agree to operate a site for bulky items. I mean, that's, I couldn't find anything on it in the minutes.
I don't remember what they're talking about on that.
Well, I don't think we had a lot of information at that time. So I don't know what was discussed with that particular, that particular contractor.
I just remember they said, I don't remember, I thought it was over 200.
Right. But you don't remember the number?
No, I don't remember. But it was vague, vague, I thought it was over 200.
It seems like it was over, over $200 a household.
I don't think it was. I was thinking in the 230 range. And I didn't, I wasn't sure how many days a week there were. I was out of that. I wasn't involved in it. But if it was only one or two days, I wasn't sure what their, and they brought up the prior one we were, I was involved in, was the same thing. The density of the county is what really.
I would think that would be a consideration, especially in today's.
And now with gas, twice as much, it would probably be.
How long ago was that program?
Oh, years ago. So back in 2017?
Probably five years ago.
Price, price for them picking it up, they was a lot cheaper. And it would be now, you know, that many years ago.
But I, so I can, I mean, I reviewed Swanee County's request for proposal package and it seems fairly straightforward. If, if y'all want to do that, we can certainly, we can certainly advertise at some point. But I don't, I don't know if that's something you're ready to do right now. Or if you want to wait until I can get more information from other counties and what their cost is. And, and maybe reach out to a county who's more consistent. I don't know that Swanee County is a good comparison because I would say that density is a big factor there.
Are there any counties that, similar to our county that does curbside pickup?
Who's that?
Any counties that's similar to our county?
I don't know. What's killing you is I think ours is one of the largest counties. If you go from like Iirdue to the Sting Hatchie, that's, that's where the, and the households, I think Swanee's probably around 16,500. And we're probably 11?
No, it's more like 9,700.
So we're way below them.
And we're spread out, except for some pockets.
Probably a third more, I would think. So that would really cripple you trying to, you know, Sting Hatchie would be an easy fix. But when you pull out of there and go, you know, towards the Ossila and all that, you know, you're paying four miles another household. That's where the problem gets.
The other, any questions off that?
Well, I have a question. So doesn't Dixie County do something similar to that as far as pickup?
I'm not sure on that. I talked to them last week and I, they never, when I was down there, they had nothing like that.
They operate roll-off sites and they have a transfer station.
That's all. They're doing compacters too, because they called me about that. They want to come down and look at our compacters, how we're set up.
I got a similar request.
So probably for discussion purposes, I mean, we, our, our rate is set. So I think, you know, if we couldn't, obviously, we couldn't go to a curbside pickup.
Well, what I would say is, if you'll allow me to try to do a little more research and see if I can find a comparable county who's recently advertised. Now, I do think there are maybe two other cities or counties who are considering advertising their, an RFP for curbside service. Maybe get a little more information about how things shake out with Swanee County. I think I can bring back some better information. I just didn't want to bring information that I did not feel like was relevant because, you know, the numbers can be totally different in today's market.
Well, I'm looking at the curbside pickup, but I think, you know, actually thinking that if we're at a $230 assessment, we're already above, I mean, I think we're just assuming that's probably about what the number was. If we go and do another RFP and it comes back that could be 280 bones. I mean, whatever, $300 on the assessment. I mean, what does that, what does that do with the study that we just done?
Right. Well, I, I do believe that we could, I don't think the study is necessarily irrelevant, but what we have to remember is what we advertise. So we advertise a maximum annual rate of $210. So no matter which way we go, we can't go above that without going through the notification process again. And notifying, you know, 10 or 11,000.
That's whether we, that's whether we go back, go to curbside?
If, if you, if you went any way that you would increase that assessment above that advertised, then we would have to, we would have to renotice.
Sitting at the table today because of everyone's happy with the current rate. A lot of folks are not happy with the current rate. So we're trying to figure out keep that rate either where it's at or for surely not increase it or not, you know, bring it down at some point.
Well, what I would, what I would say is something that you, we probably need to keep in mind is that the purpose of doing a rate study every five years is to give us, you know, to try to get into the habit of every year, we look at that, we look at our expenditures and we, our current expenditures and we look at our proposed expenditures and we look at our revenue. And if we could come down, then we can, we can do that. My only concern is that we don't have any reserves in, in this department. And, I mean, I would love it if next year the price of fuel is much less than it is now and we were able to go down on the assessment. But we do need to, we do need to consider that we may, we really need to build those reserves up if we can to some level. Because they're, well, I don't know what they'll be at the end of the fiscal year.
Of this year? Not taking into account contingency and cash balance, it'll only be $80,000.
And how much do you really need to keep? Is there a certain amount you need to carry?
Operator recommends 30% of your expenditures.
Which is going to be about 30% of 1.4 billion.
1.4 when you take capital out.
Just to tag on to what Lawanda said about putting out an RFP for a curbside. Remember, I brought you a number last meeting. I'm sorry, I didn't bring my notes. Think of what you pay, I don't know who lives in the city, Mr. Dams, you might. What the city people pay for a year for a curbside plus once a month pickup of limbs and C and D in a nine, nine square miles area? And it is close, I think it was close to $300 a year. It just, to tag along with what Ms. Lawanda was saying. Keep that in the back of your mind. As Gary mentioned, we're spread out. And if I may suggest, 15 years ago, when this came up, I think it was even before your time, I went up to Brooks County, Georgia and spoke with them and took a ride around the county. And they have curbside. But I mean, we drive for miles and all of a sudden there'd be a house. But I can't give you numbers from that long ago. But they've had curbside and I don't know how big Brooks is. Just, just.
I mean, it's a consideration and it wouldn't hurt to, to advertise and to get the numbers. But I just don't know if, if y'all are at the point.
So you pick it up once or twice a week?
They pick it twice.
And then they pick up large items?
Large items once a month.
The city picks up twice a week?
Twice a week, yeah. Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday. And then I think on Wednesdays, once a month. And they got the city broken up into four districts, I believe. So if you don't get it out, you're stuck.
Now, speaking of large items, we did, or Gary and Hank did run a test on trying to crush loads in a container at Carlton Cemetery. And, do you want to talk about this, Gary, or do you want me to? So if you recall, if you recall at our last workshop, I gave y'all pictures of one of the containers with the bulky items in it. And so the average weight of those containers was probably a little over three tons. Because one was 3.85 and the other was 2.61. And so they had to crush the items in the container five times to get close to six tons, which is about double, about double what you can, can get in a container. We did bend one container, right? And it was a little bit of a challenge to get the materials out, but we did it. So Gary and I, I did some very rough math. And if you look at, you know, the average loads a year from Carlton Cemetery, the way we figured it is there are somewhere around 709 loads a year. Approximately half of those loads are not compacted. And we, we're not worried about metal or, you know, any, any of the white goods because they don't go to the landfill. So that leaves half of the loads statistically that are not compacted. So, so that's 355 loads. And then if I divide that by two, because we were able to double the amount, the weight in a container, then that's 177.5 fewer loads in a year. Now, if you multiply that by a round trip to Ossila, which is somewhere around 60.42 miles, and you multiply that by our cost per mile, it comes out somewhere around $10,724.55 in savings. A year. $10,000. And that's only at one site. So I guess the question is, you know, I, I think the correct piece of equipment that we would want to use to do something like that would be more like a knuckle boom. Because you can control, you know, where that compaction is coming from. And I don't, I'm going to guess the cost of a knuckle boom, Hank said, and he thought it was around $100,000.
Between $100, I think, and $130.
Right. And then you have your operator cost and your fuel. Now, I'm not. Right. And then you have your operator costs and your fuel. Now, I'm not, I, I guess the question is, or really, I guess this lets us know why we haven't been compact, trying to crush those loads in the past. Because I, I, I mean, I'm not saying $10,000 isn't something that we should try to save, but I don't know how feasible it is. It would take us 10 years just to, if we just did it at one site, to recover the cost of the equipment.
And if one piece of equipment.
One piece of equipment. So that's about, you know, $40,000 a year. Now, we wouldn't need a dedicated employee if we just did it at one site. But I'm, I'm not entirely sure that it would be cost effective to try to compact every, every load at every site. We would, I, I'm not even sure how we would do it unless we, unless we had one location that those containers were brought to and left there. And then somebody, but then they would have to go back and forth and back and forth to the sites. Or, or if we had the equipment, you know, we could take it to each site. And, you know, but then, again, I, I, I don't know, we may, I don't know if we could break even or not. I don't know. Carlton is one of our busier sites that, you know, where we would have that type of tonnage or that many loads. So we would have to look at it a little bit closer to see if that would be cost effective. But we were able to, you know, pretty much double the weight in that one container. It just took a while.
But then you've probably got three sites like that, Steam Hatchet, Carlton, and one over here.
Uh, Harrison Blue.
Yeah, Harrison Blue, three.
That are, those are our busiest sites, right? Steam Hatchet, Carlton Cemetery, and, and Harrison Blue. So it's possible that if we, you know, if we bought a knuckle boom, or even if we tried to use, I mean, I, I don't want to take one of our public works um, machines out of service, but um, I mean, we could, I mean, we could go from site to site and try to compact it. It's just hard to, it's just hard to.
Is that on a truck or is that on a, a, a knuckle boom piece of equipment?
It's on a truck.
You can get one with a truck.
Oh, so you don't have to transport it?
You can drive it or you could get a, a excavator with tracks, a small one, and you can load it on the truck.
Small excavator would give you a little more use for two different things if you had a small excavator, you know, and trailer and truck to pull it around, but.
That would be about the same, that would be about the same investment, wouldn't it?
But that small excavator would do a better job actually than a knuckle boom would.
Probably would. And with the rubber tracks, with that asphalt up there, when you drop in, like when we went in there with the backhoe, when you dropped the stabilizer down and jacked that backhoe up, it started damaging the asphalt a little bit. So we had to back off a little bit. And like I say, we crushed it five times. So to get that amount, it was a lot of, not a lot of time, but it was time consuming because you had to put more trash and then come back and do it again. It wasn't just, you know, right there, dump it in there and keep compacting it. That was over a course of three days, I think, that we did that.
I looked at it when y'all were doing it a couple of times, you know, and it, it really, it was doing a good job. Nice and all that'll loose stuff down. It's crushing all stuff and, and pushing it down where, you know, like I said, it doubled the weight, you know, isn't that what's said?
I honestly thought we would get more weight. I really did. Like some were, we crushed them three times, only got four, 4.9, and stuff like, you know. But I thought honestly that when we crushed them five times, we would be around 6'5", somewhere around there. And I was shocked when he ran that first load. I didn't, I was questioning that. I didn't think it was right, but.
And a compacted load is really closer to nine or 10 tons, right?
Yeah, and a cup, yeah. And it's designed different, that octagon, it, it rolls the garbage up. We were compressing down. It's a little different.
So just, you know, more information to, to consider.
That sounds like you're going to spend 10 times the amount you would save.
Just do that at one site.
Obviously, I have rough numbers.
Well, if you did that at one site and it was a busy site, that would be 177 fewer loads.
Now, like me, we got to come back. We got to bring the slats, do away with the slats and put, make the slat bigger if, if we're born to really save money. Because we're saving labor and all by doing that, you know, somebody have to drive a little farther to get to a site, but. I think the only way you're going to do it is, is bring in just a few sites. That's my feeling. You know, just scattered all over the county with these sites is, is, is a lot of fuel and a lot of labor and a lot of. Some sites don't even want to have nobody going to them, but they're being manned, you know, and we got to get garbage put. For instance, take Phoenix out, I don't pull them. I have never been to that site when I, when I stayed down that way a lot. Never been to that site when I had a waiting line to get it to compact. I mean, never seen anybody ever when I pulled up there, you know. I'm not trying to cost nobody their job. What I'm saying is, we got, my feeling is, we're going to have to bring this thing together just a few sites and, and, and really concentrate on doing the best thing we can with those few sites.
Well, and along, I mean, along those lines, with our chronic um, challenges with keeping those, the, every site manned, um, one of the reasons that our budget is higher next year is to account for overtime. Because we, we cannot, it, it's very difficult to man the sites. I, if the sites were, say, closed on Sunday, Sunday is the, your biggest challenge, right?
Yeah, because they like to go to church on Sunday, you know, and uh, I can see that. I mean, and if you check around the other counties, normally they take Sundays off, they shut them down.
We did something on that, but I normally impact six sites, or seven days a week. I mean, would that be a reasonable, you know, expectation of beginning for this board, say, causing staffing issues? The costs that are associated with that. We could have a trial basis to see how that may work in respect to logistics of transport. When we come down, you know, from my understanding, what my expectation is, the tonnage is going to be equal when we say, if we were to operate six days instead of seven days. Now, what that changes, I think, correctly for you, if that's a mistake. But I think the difference might be some of your overtime hours versus not, or the struggles to get folks to staffing position. For me, I, I would be more willing to save and to save at being able to staff the sites. And then look at what the cost savings are going to be. Let's consider a, a trial basis of that time that we could save. We're going to look at operating six days a week, causing struggles with staff, because we have to get the costs that come with it. I mean, I think it's a, it's a win-win in the sense that you're dealing with your issues and abuses of, of tenants. And then, you know, some, another benefit, when we're not having to pay overtime versus paying straight time.
So as of the end of last fiscal year, we expended $24,000 in overtime.
As always.
You're talking about consolidating sites and maybe, you know, I'm just going to use Eridu's site. It's not that far from Shady Grove site. How many sites do you see that potentially could be consolidated?
Well, I know, you know, the low traffic areas and, you know, I, I really say 1498 for them people down there need to stay open.
I, I'd agree.
Yeah, I think that Salem, you could look at it, but we could do a count, how many people come in there. It's real low volume. The compactor there at Salem, we pulled it today and we won't pull it again till January.
So how long though, right?
That's not, that's not accurate, because some of the times that garbage is put.
It is, it is what I was stating. They may only have 15 people a day come into the site.
Well, certainly be low volume, but I think stretching on timeframe doesn't count for the times I've been told myself put up there on the hill and it's not packed. So I'd be careful about jumping to a conclusion because it appears that it's going to be 60 days before you can move that. I don't, I don't think that's a fair assumption.
Well, let's look at the numbers. Let's, let's look at the numbers.
How many cans we pulled?
Well, I understand it, but let's also look at that distance where if you consolidate that, those folks are going to go to it.
I'm, I'm stating the fact, the low volume areas is the first place you're going to look. And Eridu's a prime example.
Okay, so let, let's look at the numbers. Hold on. So if you look at Salem, and this was, this was the tonnage um, through July. I have, we, I'm still working off those numbers. So that was um, 75% of the year. There were 80 tons at Salem and 21 loads. Very similar to Eridu. Eridu was 69.78 tons, 21 loads. And then the other site is 98.14, 59 tons, 18 loads. So there are three, there are three sites that are low volume, but then I think the second part that you do have to look at is geographically, you know, folks in that area, if, if, I mean, is there another option? 98.14 is kind of in a, an isolated area. How, so 98.14, what is the closest site to 98.14?
You'd have to come into town.
Carlton Cemetery, probably. Okay. So Salem, what is the closest site?
Yeah, it was Steam Hatchet or Carlton. I'm not sure the mileage differential on that, but it.
It's a little bit of a haul probably from Salem.
Say in comparative to 98.14?
Yeah, so, so that's where I'm really getting, I'm just looking at different ways. We've sat here and kind of brainstormed. We're talking at different ways to save some money. And I, I know you talked about loads in one day per week and I just wanted to look at, you know, what could we consolidate? So, so kind of what I'm hearing really, the only, for me looking at it, the only thing that would, only site that we might could consolidate would be the Eridu side and push those folks to the Shady Grove side.
How many miles does it carry?
I wouldn't guess five miles. I wouldn't guess.
So if you look at the, the mileage, maybe that would be the least impacted.
And that's not a big, might not be a big number, but we could consolidate and probably could use the people elsewhere, you know, you may could use the folks elsewhere, you know, but uh, and also, so we done away with Eridu, so that leaves us to eight sites. We got 14 and 98, open four days. I'd be okay to go to one day a week on that.
But Howard Johnson could do it.
I'd be with Salem, I might with, you know, looking at the numbers, maybe one day a week there. And on the other six sites, cut two days. Cut them down to five days a week versus seven days. Is there any reason to have to, have to, have to drop off for seven days a week?
I think it comes down to volume and, and I think in some of the sites are really, when you start saying, okay, we're going to do one day a week, you can't spread that same personnel across those same sites because, because, you know, somebody's going to say, okay, if I'm, I'm one day a week, then I'm on Saturday. It's probably going to be more difficult to staff, I guess. You know, and if you say, oh, we're going to be open all day a week, all day on Tuesday, you're not going to get the benefit of all the days because folks aren't, you know, available when they're at work. So I think, I think in that, if you start saying, well, we could just save eight hours. We can, we won't say a day is eight hours. The problem with that is you got twice the transit. And then you run across folks. Do that distance and all of that. So, so just to say one day a week, I mean, it sounds good, it looks good on paper, but I'm just not sure that it's going to have the same, that results when we really get to that place. Because if we say, okay, we're going, we're going to minimize days, the first thing each site's going to say is, is I'm on Saturday. Those availability differences is my.
Yes.
So if you say that you would need to be open on a Saturday in order to, if you, I think if you look at the busiest days, that's how you would gauge that, you know, we could do a count.
I like the point that, you know, Salem and, you know.
When, when you look at, let's say Salem, if you went down, instead of eight hours, maybe look at, because people work at the mill and have odd shifts, maybe, you know, seven to seven or something, you know, extra hours.
I mean, if you look at the hours that you're currently at there, you're really not far from that. So if you say, hey, we're going to trim a day a week from these seven day sites, that's not in fact Salem because they're not open on Sunday anyway. They're not a seven day site, it's a three day site. So um, I think, I think some of that may, again, give a, give an indication that you, you might be saving something. But I'd be careful about really at the end of what you're going to net, because again, if you, you go at hours and you say, all right, we're, we're open, uh, 20 hours, we're going to cut that half, seven to seven, 12 hours, I mean, but we were going to make that nine to seven, whatever, for 10 hours. You know, you sit in the, in the instance that you're looking at that hour frame, it's one, one commute. Because you're there the full time that you're going to be open. I think the disadvantage to that is, if we're saying we're not going to reopen on Sundays, or, which is obviously the weekend, I don't think you get the same uh, availability of, of the site being open and folks being in a place that they could use the site.
So on the six, there are seven days. You open them five days a week and bring in the same trash and get the same job done? Two to three Saturdays, you do two to three Saturday?
We could, we could try it. I mean, there'd be, if you looked at Carlton, for example, they have a large volume there. We would just, there'd be a lot more volume coming in in five days because it'd be compressed. But I'd say we couldn't do it.
Yeah, but think about that intersection there. Remember during COVID when we cut down the hours? It was, it was, it, we had some traffic hazards and I can't recall how many days we, when we started opening back up, how many days that was. Was, and people were, I mean, that, that intersection got jammed up pretty quick.
That'll do to what?
Go back to the fallaway intersection on Puck Road there, trying to turn into the dump.
That was during, there was a short period of time that, that we were, there was three weeks, I think, where we put the containers on the outside of the gates because we did not have PPE, you know, that was at the very beginning of COVID and there was a supply chain issue. So we basically just shut down operations, put the containers on the outside of the gates and for several weeks. But then when we opened back up, we um, I think it, I can't remember how many days a week it was that we opened back up. But it was, it was, it was a little painful at that particular site because it's so busy.
Trying to buy toilet paper and laundry at the same time.
And that's the only one I can think of where, besides Steam Hatchet, maybe where.
Steam Hatchet was a little bit, but I don't think at that moment.
Your dog's site was completely, pretty much shut down for three weeks. I mean, you're talking still having a site open for five days a week.
Yes, sir. I, I understand what you're saying. I, I, that, I just wanted to bring that bit sometimes that we had experienced, um, so a little bit of a traffic issue at that particular site. Um, because there was nowhere for cars to stage, you know, while, while they were waiting for the site to open. And I know that if Steam Hatchet, if we ever have an issue where a site doesn't open on time, the cars will be lined up all the way back to the highway. Um, just because there's not, I mean, they're just very, very busy sites and there's not a lot of room for people to wait.
Well, that's, Steam Hatchet, those frames now, that's created at highway.
Well, that's correct too.
That's a little bit more complicated for us.
Yeah, Blue Springs isn't quite as busy, but you're right.
You got enough room for one hog truck. That's how we gauged it, a truck coming.
Turn in, right, so maybe two of you, about trailer per seven.
But once people got used to it, I, I mean, I'm sure we could overcome that.
You know, I, I just thought, I've gone with Madison County. I know, I don't. I know, I don't want to use the word Cadillac again. Anything you bring in, you can kick it off, you accept. Madison County, anything you can pick up and put in the garbage, they accept.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's the difference in, now, even Madison County moved their site from where they used to be. We need to look at some real estate and see where can we use, better utilize, put up on site rather than. We don't have to stay in Carlton, I don't recognize. They have better site than Carlton?
Uh, now are you, you're speaking of if we had.
Yes, moving the site somewhere else, you know, because it's there now, it doesn't have to remain there.
We've got, we've got a piece of property right at the airport could be used for bigger size, not by the airport. Where the, you know, the county on, it was about ten acres in that area right there. On, on the, where it used to be, the, uh, Pennsylvery where the.
It can run with that one?
No, it's a, it used to belong, the county got it back. It's right there on the backside airport. It's about ten acres between Mr. Swain's farm and cemetery.
Lector Cemetery, yeah.
Yeah, it's about ten acres there. It's between cemetery and Mr. Swain's house there. It's on the same, same side of the road as airport. But George Pacific, I talked to them about giving us more property in Carlton. And they, they were fine with that if we worked them, you know, we worked with them. They, they said they'd give us more, more property there.
I think you probably just referred to that intersection, being close to that intersection.
Yeah. I was down there the other day and it looked like they had a couple of hogs or something over there just across the street.
I might throw the big bull hog out over across the street.
Now, pass stuff on their car.
Now, I wonder if that opened with cars when that happened, you know?
Yeah, they, they, nothing was moving. They just, they could go across the street. That corner gets a lot, their hunting, it gets a lot of buckets of guts and here they go there. They can pull off the road, they got a little cover there, they just pour them out, you know?
Well, and, and still the unresi, I think one of the reasons we started discussing solid waste is that at, at some point, we do need to try to come to some type of solution for taking, taking limbs. Now, let me clarify with the limbs to make sure we're all on the same page. We can take limbs that are four inches in diameter and four feet long. That is considered yard debris. So if people bring in the small limbs, we can take those as long as it's residential and it's not a contractor. What we're struggling with is the limbs that are much bigger. The old ordinance had a size limit of twelve inches in diameter by four feet, which is a lot more difficult to handle. It takes longer to burn, you know, it piles up. So I guess the, if, if the board wishes to collect and dispose of limbs larger than four inches by four feet, we have to come up with a system to, to collect and dispose of that debris. And the same with construction debris. And there's a very specific definition of construction debris. It doesn't include things like carpet. It does not include bulky items. It's not appliances. It's a list of very specific construction materials like roofing shingles, gypsum, concrete, you know, big, big tree trunks, things like that. So, you know, we, we do have to remember that we still have to address that issue, which is what we've been trying to address for a couple of years. Because it's, you know, it's been difficult to come to a solution. But I, I did want to clarify, we can take the smaller limbs. That's not the issue. It's the large limbs that are outside of that size limit that we have to come to a conclusion of how we want to address. If we just don't want to take them and people must bring smaller pieces, you know, they would have to bring us much, much smaller, you know, limb pieces or you may not want us to handle them at all. And that's not considered residential.
Oh. Then we talk about potentially unmanned sites? We're looking at unmanned sites. I don't know, we probably couldn't do, probably couldn't do Carlton, Steen Hatchie and maybe Air Supply. But maybe some of the other sites would be unmanned sites.
So I would think that would take a design change, obviously. You know, we could not have the hills and the large containers and all that. It would basically be sites with, what size containers are they? Twelve yard.
We might have some county sites there on fourteen. You had to walk up and throw it in the wind and end up in the end of.
I mean, of course, we would, I, if we did that, I think we would have to look at three sites. I mean, potentially the three sites that are manned sites, but if we're going to, you know, take in C and D, that would probably be, if one of those or so may have to be that, that location.
And, and that's what we had originally started discussing. And then obviously we, we had to set that aside so we could finish the study and, and pass the ordinance and now we're coming back to it. But I, I, the only question I have about unmanned sites is how do we, how do we prevent abuse at those sites?
You couldn't, they'd have, they'd have, they'd have a lot, big long lot of blood stored in there, paint, uh, oil. Batteries, it is big.
Well, I wouldn't even know how to restrict it to only those folks who pay the assessment if they're unmanned. And that seems to be such a point of contention that, you know, that would concern me a little bit. How we could monitor that. I, I don't know how we could.
You have a myth on unmanned site, that county, I think, could be a myth.
Commissioners, Commissioner, I apologize. I don't know if you're a Taylor County resident, uh, native or not.
Right.
You are. When I got here in two thousand, we had eight manned sites and one unmanned site, which was Eridu. And it was during our tenure that the board decided we needed to man Eridu. At the same time, when I got here, for those of you that certainly, and I say this with respect, old timers, you remember there were at least four other roll-off sites in this county that were not, that were closed. There's still, there's still four hills around this county that I'm aware of that were used. So when you're talking about consolidation, change is hard, but evidently the commission at that time made that decision to close four of them. Uh, one, the infamous white elephant on San Pedro. Think that's Miss Pam's district? Um, and there was one in Boyd. There was one down that road that goes from nineteen to the beach road.
Telly Gray. Oh, Telly Gray.
Telly Gray. And there was one in Boyd.
Old Puckett Road, Frank Worthy intersection.
There were, there were a number of, but I, I would contend that those also were closed with the understanding that these that remain are in locations to strategically be able to break the mileage so that the residents can use those and get the true benefit.
Oh, I don't disagree with you. I'm just giving you a little history about change is hard. And when I also got here, we were open three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Interim manager at that time, Barbara Bratcher, brought it to the board that we were going to close on Thanksgiving and Christmas. And I will tell you, the first two years that we did that, especially at Harrison Blue, Gary sure knows, were pure hell. But once we got past that, we did, we seemed to do okay. So just as you consider these things, nobody likes change. I don't like it. I'm probably the biggest stick in the mud there ever was. But it's, it's, whatever your thinking is, keep that kind of stuff in mind. We've done it, we've done it before. The day after Thanksgiving, no, the day after Christmas, the first year we closed, my mechanic and I went out to Harrison Blue, of course, of all places. The garbage was lined up from the compactor all the way out to the roadway, all the way down. And it took Lloyd and I an hour and a half to compact everything that was on the ground, but we got past it. That's just history, gentlemen.
It's almost impossible with the system we got here and what people used to, to have an unmanned site anytime in each or I.
I think you'd be inviting a lot of liability to have an unmanned site.
They'd be backing up the hill and throwing it over, getting back in the truck, showing us the truck, I'd do it.
It would have to be a different, a totally different design.
They put them out of here.
Right.
Get up and even clear a little bit and I mean, they would really be lined up out by the fence and well, that is pretty much what would happen there.
Right.
Yes. And close the hills off where they can't even drop up.
Right.
And people all around the county go to businesses and, and put them in there, wait for a can and that. Some people just go right down there to the seven elevens, got a waste pro can and they throw their garbage in that. I mean, I've seen it in a lot of different places, people at airport capital hall, we got a waste pro behind the building there. And they filled it up. I mean, you know, sometimes, you know, it just, it's going to go somewhere. They leave the hospital, they're not going to care about it, you know?
And I would say, you know, the thing to keep in mind that, you know, when you reduce hours, again, what you're saving is your, your hourly labor and that's, that's the extent of it. So it's somewhere around fourteen dollars an hour for every hour that you close a site, unless I'm missing something. I mean, that's really the only, the only cost saving and, and potentially overtime. You know, if, if, if we could cut down on overtime, that's a potential savings of twenty-five thousand dollars a year based upon the last fiscal year, what we spent. And that's just from having to staff these sites with full-time employees who are willing to, to work the sites.
If you cut them, if you just took the sites and have every other day open, people get used to it. They just know every other day the site will open again. I mean, that would, that would be, I know, I think that would be a big thing, you know, every other day.
Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday? Yeah, that's what I would think if you were going to do it. Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday?
But maybe have them open longer hours?
Like seven to seven, you know?
Just to make sure everyone has an opportunity.
To get there.
I'd do eight to seven. I'll, I mean, some make it early, I guess, but.
Or even ten hours.
I guess seven to seven, folks could run by the dump on the way to work.
People have the same amount of garbage going, but it just doesn't have time every other day. You know, you got sites open seven days a week. I mean, it cuts, cuts it down, you know?
Now, Gary, do you think that we would, if, if the sites were closed for any amount of time, would we be able to keep up with moving those containers around like we need to? Could we stage extra containers just in case? I mean, we'd almost have to do that, wouldn't we?
Yeah, and we, we kind of do that now on weekends or three day, three day holiday in there, whether we. We've, we've got pretty decent at that staging. We're challenged a little bit with having extra cans to do with every site, but we've got, we've been fortunate we haven't been, you know.
But we would almost know which sites would need, I mean, if we would need additional pans.
That's what we kind of do now. We just place them on the hill like they may have three instead of two. We put one in the middle trying to.
For your household.
We could have sites that would just like Carlton be open seven days a week and then some sites, you know, every other day, half a day, you know, where would it throw you off with your, with your drivers if you were working every other day? I mean, that'd be a.
It probably wouldn't, but we, we'd stagger them. There's probably other stuff. They'd probably be busy enough to work a regular shift, you know what I'm saying? If you had Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday, we know that would be the heavy days. They would still be probably pulling on Tuesdays, like Carlton, for example. Yesterday, he pulled four cans and the four cans, every time he brought a can, there was another one full. What I'm saying, he couldn't stay up. He had the same amount of full cans when he got down that, that day, and or. He, he had the same amount of cans. He started out with, let's say, six full ones. When he got down to the end of the day, he had one empty, you know, five full. That's how fast they were bringing it in. So if, if he was off, if that site was closed Tuesday, for example, he could pull Tuesday and get caught back up. He would, he, I have to send somebody down there to help him and he'll catch up probably around Thursday from what we had from the weekend and what's coming in this week.
He can pull on his, on the off day that the site is, like, if it was Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday, he could, the driver could pull.
Yeah, that's true.
He still can catch up.
Besides that, you know, they got recycled cans, tire cans, metal can, you know, there's a lot more going on in the county. But, you know, you could taper back. I mean, you could figure it out. It wouldn't take long, couple of weeks, you'd figure out, you know, get some rhythm on it, see what you need to do. So you were going to mention something about a trial, doing a trial and.
Yes. So I still think it may be, are you talking about the, the waste stream study?
You just said you were going to talk, you're getting, Gary, talking about a trial.
So I think what that is referring to is the, the, the one week waste stream study at Osilla. When you can spare and employ, I think that would give us a good idea of, of what composition of our waste stream is C and D or is, you know, some limbs end up at Osilla, right? What's household, what's, you know, we would have a better idea of what's really going into the site. And, I mean, I don't know that it will change the tonnage necessarily, but I think it would help us prepare for what volume of C and D we're really taking in at the end of the day. Because when, you know, what we're looking at is compacted versus not compacted. And there's numerous reasons that it may not be compacted and we can't assume that that is all one particular material. We don't know what it is. So as far as trying to plan for, for charging for C and D, I think it would be helpful to know what percentage of our volume really even meets that criteria. And, you know, and I don't know what can be in a mixed load. I mean, if someone pulls up with a trailer full of material, there could be something, you know, at the bottom of the pile that the attendant doesn't even see. And that would give us a little bit of an idea of the percentage of our tonnage, you know, what that would be as far as C and D versus household versus, you know, limbs or whatever else ends up at the site. And that's something that we can plan, as soon as we can break somebody free.
Yeah. You know, we talk about the weekends, uh, through the week, my mechanic and the people in my office are running roll-off sites too. Like I don't, I don't have, like, a mechanic maybe once a week and. You can do the study at the landfill.
At the landfill. So just.
Contractual service.
Landfill, seven deal. What, five, six?
Whatever. Design it, I can. That's just the one.
That first slide across city, they must have luck with that. They do it. You know, they bring their cans there, Gary, they put them, they dump them all out and then sort stuff.
They use inmate labor for that too.
Yeah. And I, like, when that labor they use, is that something they pay for through the state home or is that county?
Well, no, I believe it's from DOC and, but you have to remember, we can only have two, we can only have a total of three work squads within the county. Two of them, we already contract out and then the city has a work squad. They will not, so DOC will not give us another squad. That's just.
So that, that's not on the plate doing transport place, you know, really.
If we're, if we would tran, if we would staff it with inmate labor, I think, I mean, I think that's how Dixie County is able to utilize their, their site. And they don't expend any more funds than they do because they staff it with inmate labor. So, and I, they have a scale.
They do, they charge on some too.
But I believe, from what I understand. But I believe, from what I understand, now, some counties do take small amounts of dry bulky materials. So again, you know, if someone, if someone pulls up to a site and we look at our current ordinance and they have, they have, you know, small limbs, palm fronds, things like that, that would not need to go to the trans, transfer station. So we're, we're really talking about, when we talk about things like limbs, we're talking about anything bigger than four inches by four feet. So, and it's difficult for me to know the percentage of the small versus the large. Um, and do we, do we really want to handle that? Um, and I, it's hard for me to predict, um, you know, what folks would do with that material or if it's, you know, or how often a resident would even generate that type of material.
So if we're saying limbs or leaves, basically, four inches.
Four inches by four feet is considered yard trash.
And that doesn't account for a twelve-inch or eighteen-inch block that's four foot, as far as a tree. The limbs themselves is, is what I'm saying, not if I took down a tree.
Four inches by four, right.
So I would have to accommodate for the tree trunk itself, if I were to cut down a tree, I'd have to process the limbs that are smaller than four inches.
Right.
Into four-foot lengths. And then the block or the main trunk of the tree wouldn't be accepted as a roll-off site.
Right, and I went to the, I sent Mr. Wanda a picture the other day. I took a picture of the sign, leaves and limbs. And then I put the camera over in the dumpster, it had a few limbs, it had metal, it had five gallon buckets, it had toys, it had stacks of carpet and between, I mean, and that whole background, you got to have somebody else standing up on a hill. The man in the hill to say, no, that goes in that one, this guy got a piece of metal there, this number three or whatever. I mean, there's really no way to, without sorting it again and with all that labor, you'd never have a clean load. You know, I mean, there's, there's no way, I, I'd had everything under the sun in that one picture I've seen.
But, so that would be, that would just go in as household garbage.
If it's small.
Right, um, I mean, it would be, we would be charged for class one household, household garbage. And you have to remember that with our present rebate, and I don't know if that ever changes or not, I'm, I'm not sure, but that is, that translates into about twenty-one dollars a ton versus thirty-four if we, if we separated the household, the class one from the class three.
So really you're coming out ahead, calling it all class one, correct?
We are.
Money blocks.
Because the rebate's only offered on the class one.
And let them dump everything they want to in that, that class one site, you might as well.
Right. So I think when it becomes an issue is when a metal bin is, you know, contaminated or, um, if it's limbs that could have gone to the incinerator but now have to go to the landfill. Is when it, I mean, it's still an issue, but I, I don't know that there's any value now in separating the class one and the class three, which I'm assuming is why we've done it that way for so long.
I think if you got them down to four-foot length and four inches of size of limbs, you'd, you'd have a lot more weight in the container when you hold them, to, you know, I mean, that, but you hold it that out to burn. But then again, what, what happened when you get the limbs out, Gary, you got a trap in it, back track.
We gotta dig it out.
You just dig it out?
Yeah, DEP or E, each, uh, if they come out there and see that. We got a container out there, we dig it out and throw it into a container. Got to sort through it sometimes.
So that labor that's got to sort through it, even though where you got to sort through, everybody goes out anyway.
Yeah, we look at it, but sometimes they'll have treated lumber and people think you can burn it, they'll throw it right in with the limbs. You don't like a two before, whatever, you can't burn that either.
Can I ask you a question? If you had this, I guess this is called mixed use, what you're talking about. So if you had, uh, say you had a little bit of, um, household garbage and then somebody comes in and puts their limbs in and they're all crossed and, and so it actually fills up the canister, but there's lots of space in between, so in terms of trips that we make and the cost of, of the trips, is, is this, I mean.
Well, so let, let me catch you up. So we did a test where we, um, crushed or compacted loads that had, like Gary, they had like furniture and just bulky materials. We were able to double, you know, pretty much double the, the weight of the load. And when we looked at the math today, unless I'm, you know, unless I'm looking at it incorrectly, um, compacting a load based upon the tonnage at Carlton Cemetery would only save us about ten thousand dollars a year. So what we were discussing is, you know, is it worth going through the, the cost to hire someone, the cost of equipment, fuel, if you're not going to realize that much of a cost savings? And, you know, I, I don't, I, I think we would have to try to devise a way to compact loads at every site for really to be, to really realize more of a cost savings.
So that ten thousand, was that just for one roll-off savings at one roll-off?
That was, that was something that we figured at Carlton Cemetery, which is a very busy site. So based upon the current tonnage there, um, and, and assuming that half of the tonnage there is not compacted, um, and the other half is compacted, because that's about how it turned out in the study, right Gary? It was about half and half. Um, and then, you know, we had to compact it five times to get that weight up to almost six tons. So it brought the weight from an average of about three tons to hopefully about six tons. And so really, so, so where your savings would be is that mileage going back and forth to the landfill. So from, that's about sixty miles. And we figured that our cost per mile just for the vehicle and the associated vehicle cost, it's about two dollars and fifty cents a mile. Now, that's not, you know, your, your administration costs and your utilities and all your overhead and all that. That's just what's associated with the vehicle. And these are, I mean, we're, we're just trying to make some projections. So if you have that and you were able to move that equipment to, say, three sites, um, you would just double that number as far as your projected savings. But then would we need to hire someone and spend more than what we would save?
Okay, so the ten thousand dollars did not account for the labor that you would need to, to, oh, okay, so that's not clear. Um, I hate to use the word profit, but, you know, what I'm saying.
Savings, savings, yeah. So, um, and I'm not, I hope that was where you were going with your question.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. I'm sorry I was late, y'all, I totally forgot about this meeting, to be honest with you. I've been out in my yard having so much fun.
So, so we did talk about, um, just, just so you know, we, um, I've looked at an RFP of a surrounding county and for curbside pickup and we have some concerns with that. I don't know if our present assessment would cover what it would cost for curbside service. Because from what Gary and I recollect, the last time we got a little bit of an estimate maybe to do that, it was over, it, it was not, it would have cost our residents more.
So we ought to do a current, um, um, survey to see how much it would cost now?
Well, I don't know how to do that and make it apples to apples because I looked at Swanee County, they have not awarded the bid yet. And I believe there is another city in a county that are, are probably going to go out to bid soon. I think I need to get more information before I can really compare apples to apples because, um, say Swanee County, they have sixteen thousand five hundred households. We only have about ninety-three hundred or ninety-four hundred if you pay the assessment. And we have a very large county, so, so where I think the, um, what drives the cost is probably density. And that's kind of what I recall before, that that was a consideration because, you know, there's only several areas where people, you know, say Steen Hatchie, where you have that density. Well, so if you have a big county, fewer residents, I don't know that you can truly compare the cost. I'm afraid that, I'm afraid it would cost more than what our current assessment is. But that's just an assumption I'm making based upon what I'm afraid would drive the cost. And our assessment, even though it's higher than it used to be, it's still substantially lower than, say, Swanee County, I think Swanee County is at two twenty-five? Something like that.
And that's about whole orbit only, isn't it?
That's what, household.
Yes, for household.
That's what orbit only, big twenty-five.
I believe so, I don't, I don't, well, no, I don't know, so I better not speak out of turn.
But I, I know they got.
I don't know what the city is, I think Swanee's the same, I think they, I'd have to look and see.
Do they charge, are they just household? They don't accept anything but household?
I don't think they do either.
But remember, for, you know, but remember, for us, household is anything but the specific materials and C and D and limbs over four inches by four feet. So, you know, I'm having a hard time really, um, determining how, how much material that is at the end of the day.
Good, um, I guess, could we, you know, go out for bids and see what it would, would cost? I mean, there's, would that hurt anything just to see what, what kind of pricing might we do it?
I don't know that it would, it, it might hurt people's feelings if, if that's something y'all, if the assumption was that there would be mandatory curbside service, but that's something that, I mean, I think as long as it was made clear that, um, we're, you know, we're just kind of testing the waters. But if we make that clear, I don't know how many proposals we'll actually receive, if that's the understanding going into it. I don't know that companies will, will want to spend the time to submit a proposal. And, and I'm just.
Well, who knows, I mean, I, I, I'm just, you know, thinking through the process as well. But it, it, it might, you know, if the prices were right, it might turn into something for somebody. But of course, if it's not, then it wouldn't, so I guess that's a, a risk. But then again, you've still got the problem of what you're gonna do with all that other.
Well, and that's, that's something that I think we could, um, we could customize our, uh, a request for proposals to include, you know, that service for, uh, you know, they would operate a site to accept the larger limbs and the C and D or the bulky materials. Because you have to remember, the curbside service is only what you can put in a can. It has to be bagged garbage in a can. So there has to be some way for folks to be able to dispose of refrigerators, stoves, metal, you know, everything else, couches, chairs, all that. So I, I do think that we could include in our RFP that they must operate, you know, however many sites, um, for, for that type of disposal. But then I don't, but then I think there would be an additional charge to those folks.
Yeah, and I, I kind of, I, I mean, I'm thinking that if I was gonna, uh, submit a bid or something like this, that it would have sort of the same guidelines as we've got. I wouldn't want to pick up four or five pound trees on the side of the road that have been, that have been cut up, you know, so.
So, and then we could customize once a week, twice a week, but there's got to be some way to, you know, for people to dispose of things that don't fit in a can that's on the curb. Because that's, that's really the challenge now. And I don't, I don't know how many of our services, um, offer anything other than the bags, the bagged garbage in the can. But I, I, what I'd like to do, um, if the board agrees, is try to get my hand, try to obtain some other RFPs of surrounding counties that I believe are going to be advertised soon and really take a look at, because I think it would be more relevant. I don't want to use old information and that's why I didn't use old information because I don't think the prices would be the change, the same with the minimum wage mandate and the, the cost of fuel and everything else. So I think that if we continue to try to gather that information and I can really take a look at what county's comparable to us, if they award the bid, what's the amount, how, how that works out, that we'll have some relevant information and then maybe can decide if you wish to advertise for that same proposal.
Have y'all talked about any other options other than roadside? If you have, I'll catch up with you later, I don't want to waste everybody else's time.
John, Matt, do you want somebody to suggest maybe closing some sites?
So there is a discussion of, so, um, you had requested that I provide the numbers, and these are all rough estimates, if we closed every site one day a week. And that looks like it projects to a cost savings of approximately sixty thousand dollars a year. Now, the last time we, we talked, um, we had looked at closing six sites, I believe. One day a week, is it six? And that was about forty thousand dollars. So if we close, you know, nine sites one day a week, that would be sixty thousand dollars. And then if you close nine sites two days a week, you would double that number. So then there was a discussion of some of the sites with the lower volume and the potential to, you know, are there any sites that could, could we consolidate some of the sites? Could any of the sites be closed? And the sites with the, the three sites with the lowest volume were Iridu, Salem and ninety-eight fourteen. And so then the discussion was, okay, well, do y'all want to consider reducing the hours? Do you want to consider closing any of those sites? I think the two sites that are closest to each other now are Iridu and Shady Grove. And, you know, Salem is kind of out in a remote area, ninety-eight fourteen. Those folks would have to come probably all the way to Carlton Cemetery would be the closest roll-off site. I think the folks at Salem would have a similar challenge. They would either have to come to town or to Blue Springs, Steen Hatchie, or come to town because of, they're, they're in kind of an outlying area. So the, the only site I think that is geographically close to another site is Iridu. And that's within a few miles of Shady Grove, right? And that's a low-volume site. So you would potentially save just the, just the labor now, you know.
How closing it, how, what did you discuss of closing that? Days or part of, huh?
Closing the period, right.
Well, they, we talked about a lot of different things, yeah. But that, you know, just in the discussion, that site is really the only one that's physically, you know, geographically close to another site. And maybe the board could, could consider. But, you know, there are three sites that have low volume and, um, Salem, I think, is three day, is open three days a week now. Ninety-eight fourteen is four days a week and Iridu is three. So it's not a tremendous cost savings because they, they aren't open that many hours. Now, where we could potentially save money is in overtime because, uh, the last fiscal year, we spent almost twenty-five thousand dollars in overtime. We have a chronic shortage of roll-off site attendants. We have, and we're under utilizing some of our staff because we have a mechanic working a roll-off site. We have the secretary working a roll-off site. You know, we, we are really struggling with trying to keep these sites open. And that's when the discussion was, okay, well, you know, if there was a, if there was one day we could close, Sunday might give us some relief because that's typically the day we struggle with staffing and have to pay overtime.
Okay, so what, um, with, um, say using the, the secretary when you had to, what, what impact has that had? What kind of negative impact has that had on the organization?
Well, then that leaves, well, so, I think Gary's been basically filling the mechanic's job responsibilities.
Secretary.
And, right, and so that leaves one person in the office. And if she's doing other duties, then, you know, people have to leave a, a message. There's no one there to answer, which isn't a tremendous, I don't think there's been a tremendous impact, but it makes it, it has an impact.
Well, I think about if you, you know, if you wanna, uh, continue to pay for somebody to be there just to answer the phone, which I know they don't answer it all the time anyway, or just, you know, at the end of the day, give yourself time to catch all those messages and get back with everybody.
That's not all they do, though. They, they gotta enter stuff, they gotta make scheduling, they do payroll, there's a lot more.
Well, because remember, the reason that we asked the board to approve that secretary position was so that our superintendent could be our mosquito control, take over the mosquito control duties. So we did quite a bit of shifting of responsibilities, and thank goodness that she's been able to step in and help with, you know, other departments on environmental services, or excuse me, solid waste being one of them, because it's just kind of worked out as far as the seasons. But I don't think that's the best long-term solution is to, is to, especially for the mechanic. I mean, we don't, we would rather have that person fulfilling the job duties of a mechanic rather than working in a roll-off site. But that's, that's just one example. So, so the board understands, you know, some of the struggles we've had with filling those positions. And especially with the cost of fuel now, I think that, isn't that just about the biggest complaint we get? So we have people who only want to work a site close to their home, because fuel being so expensive, they don't wanna drive to Steen Hatchie, or, you know, some of the, or wherever. But sometimes it's impossible to, you know, to make that work out. I, I think they try to accommodate that, but it just doesn't always work. And so people really, that's why we have some issues with our call-ins, because if they live north of town, they don't wanna drive to Steen Hatchie, and I don't, I don't really blame them. I don't know that they really make much money by the time they go back and forth to Steen Hatchie with today's fuel prices.
Well, it, it's just their, their salary is so low anyway. Have you ever thought about, um, maybe, uh, pay their mileage?
I don't know if...
They, they, every employee we had, they had to drive to one mile, if we started that.
I'm talking about if you drove from north of town to Steen Hatchie. I'm not talking about if you drove from Iridu to Shady Grove, or, but yeah, I mean, ninety-eight's a long way. So I'm just, you know, thinking outside the box. Is that, is that cheaper than overtime? Has anybody calculated that to see?
No, because, I mean, the closest we come to that is, I do know that, um, like, if we have boat ramp attendants who work on the weekends, they, they drive to the road department, and they use a vehicle to go to the boat ramp, but there's usually more than one person, and, you know, it's several of them. But it's not comparable to Iridu, to Steen Hatchie. And I don't, I don't know. I mean, we could look at that and see, but we would have to have some pretty stringent guidelines on when that would be, um...
Well, if you, you know, if you went back to the sixty thousand dollar savings for closing every one of them one day, so would that be staggered, which day that they would be closed, so that, and again, if you did that, thinking you could make up for your stack shortage, then it may entail driving a long ways. But was that gonna be closing everybody on the same day, or should...
We discussed, so several options were discussed. One of them was just closing on Sundays, because that seems to be comparable with what other counties offer, and that it's a little bit of a challenge as far as keeping the sites open on Sundays, as far as getting people to work. Then the other, I think, where we were maybe left it, um, was maybe having the sites open every other day, um, instead of seven days a week, having them open Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. And I don't know if that's something that could be staggered, so, you know, on any given day, there might be a site open, but it may not be, you know, the one closest to someone's home.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I don't know that if I'm in favor of Sundays, because you think about people that go to the beach for the weekend, and what do they do? I would think that they would go by and, and, um, dump their garbage before they head back to Georgia, wherever they're going. Same thing with ninety-eight. Um, you know, people go down there and hunt and for the weekend, and are they gonna, I mean, it's just a thought.
Well, I know that during scallop season, um, that, I mean, that's why we have the, the, the Blue Springs site open at ten. After scallop season, the site doesn't even open on Sundays until two o'clock. But during that busiest time, yes, I mean, it's open at ten, to try to accommodate those folks, I think, who are leaving town, so they can stop, drop off their trash before they head out. But I know I also, you know, when we were receiving a lot of feedback about changing the assessment, that seemed to be a complaint I heard over and over, is the site's not open when we leave. Maybe they leave early in the morning, I don't know. But it's not open when I wanna use it anyway. So, and now I have to, you know, that was some of the frustration.
Can you do, um, some kind of quality control, sort of, um, something that would, with each site of when are they the busiest, and which day, and which day are they least busy, so that you know before, if we really did think about doing that, then we would have some data that would say, yes, we've, you know, we know which, which, which day is the slowest.
Is that something that we, we can't really tell that by the, the, um, tickets, the logs?
They'd have to count the cars.
You know, how many comes in, and just do a, like a quality control study, sure. At least you've got something, you've got data when people start fussing, you know, you, you've got some data.
They, they got some data on how many cans leave there, each, at each site. Uh, Gary does, he has a, you know, the actual, how many cans leave from each site. I've seen most of the ones that live, how many cans leave each site, you know.
Does that tell you how busy they are, though?
Yep, yeah, but, but, well, the busy still the can, I mean, you know what I mean?
Unless somebody takes a lot of stuff and puts it in there. I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
I mean, we can, we can do that. I mean, we can ask each attendant to tally, um, you know, how, how, how many cars...
Work with.
Did I miss anything? In my review, did I miss anything?
I think the people who live with the site, you know, every other day, you know, a lot of people only go twice a week anyway, it sounds like. A lot of people go three times, you know. The city, how many, they pick it up twice a week or once a week? Twice a week. And they actually charge more than we do, and they only pick up...
Kind of prepare for that, you know, what's your day? And, um, so, you know, you get your garbage out there, or either it's not, it's not taken that day.
What about the limbs that they, you pile out there, I see them picking them up with their, you grab them, that is once a month?
Yes, once a month.
Once a month. So in other words, we get limbs every day, and they pick them up only once a month for more money, you know, so.
John, how much you, how much is the assessment for the city?
I'm sorry to bring my notes with me. I think it's, it's twenty...
Thirty-three dollars a month.
Sure?
Thirty-three dollars.
That's what I thought, twenty-one something for garbage, and then eleven or twelve for landfill. So, would you say thirty-three, Commissioner? Times twelve?
It's ninety-six dollars.
There you go. That's curbside. That's curbside. In a small, compacted area.
And they, I think if you leave a big tree trunk laying out there, and they have to cut it up and get it, they, they charge extra, too.
Well, I, what I've been seeing, those people that put them big tree trunks up, have a dumpster out there, and they take, do take brush and limbs, small limbs.
Right, but they don't take the big trunks.
No, if you put a slot pot out there, or a concrete block or something, they'll pick it out and put it over to the side, and they'll take it with the limbs.
You put a water heater or stove out there, they'll pick it up, what you got?
People in the community come by and get that.
That's true.
That's off, too.
Straight to the recycle center and sell it.
They're gonna be yelling, get it, you know, while you sleep.
Is that what we wanna do, the car count at these sites? And then maybe look at what kind of savings we would say, the savings we would see in opening three days a week, taking it two to third to Saturday? Is that what I'm doing?
Two to Wednesday?
Obviously, we can just open three, three days a week, two to, we're talking, open seven...
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, what, Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
Two to third to Saturday, you don't want that to be open on Saturday.
Don't have to be open on the weekend.
So, and also, we talked to hours from seven to seven.
I, I, I mean, that was just a suggestion, just to accommodate, um, people who may need to drop off before work or after work. If we, even if, and I don't know if twelve hours is the best number, ten may, I don't know. What do you think, Gary?
Well, like Carlton, it's open, you know, basically, well, right, you know, now, daylight saving times, it's open from seven to six, but through the, every season, spring, summer, it's seven to seven. And, uh, there's a few people coming in before eight o'clock, I've been down there, Jim probably seen him too, and, uh, I think it's people going to work, like to the mill or somewhere like that, I think.
Yeah, probably even look at, you know, cost saving, then, if we did consolidate the Iridu site and push those folks to Shady Grove.
I don't know if I wanna close it all the way.
What, what, four miles down there or there?
Let's get the data, let's, let's get the data on our quality control study and see, see where we're at with all of them. Now, what are we, have y'all, did y'all discuss, uh, these contractors and people bringing carpet in from Bad Cop and places like that?
No, I think, um, no. I think that's been addressed. Have you gotten any feedback after you sent that memo out?
People called, people, the people coming to signs is, you know, bucking it there.
So, so basically, um, you know, we, Gary has circulated memos about checking cards and had employees sign off on it to make sure everybody understands what the expectations are. But after, um, we received a complaint of a contractor dropping carpet off at a site, um, we, Gary sent out a memo that basically read that if, if, even if someone has a card, if they have a marked vehicle that identifies them as a contractor, that they are not allowed to enter the site unless they have just household garbage. I mean, if they have a sack of garbage that's obviously from their home, that's different. And then, and then, uh, I believe it said later on in the memo, that even if their vehicle is not marked, and they have materials that would indicate that they're a contractor, that they should be questioned.
When you say contractor, does that mean a tree surgeon, or does that mean any business owner?
Anybody pulls in there that's doing a business?
So if I'm advertising something that's not generating solid waste, and that's my personal vehicle, was that...
They say there, if, if it comes in, say, like, we're, uh, I don't know, a builder, roofer, stuff like that.
Right, no, I'm talking about somebody that has a, a shop, a business that sells.
In reality, they shouldn't be in there if they are.
Right, but they're having the household garbage.
Household garbage, we don't, we don't argue with.
Right.
Uh, we'll talk to you afterwards. Because I, I do believe, after your discussions, that there have been sites that have questioned people that aren't bringing in, you know, C and D or limbs, really, they were suggested to remove their sticker off their personal vehicle, because they had a magnet or, or something on their, their vehicle about their business. It's not generating commercial garbage. It was, it was, the vehicle was personal, their only vehicle.
Well, and like, say, on that paper specifies a bit, you know, household garbage, yeah, they can dump automatically, yeah, they are not.
I'm not saying it's going to be fault-proof. I mean...
No, I just think we've gotta be practical. I mean, if I've got a bag of trash, and I'm gonna have a magnet on my door that says...
They can call me.
Laundry, it doesn't mean that I'm, I'm bringing in a, you know, boatload of laundry to dump in the dumpster.
And we, and we talked to the roll-off attendants, told them, say, if a guy pulls up there, he's got signs on, he's putting household trash in there, he's fine, no matter, if he's got a question, call me. Just call me, and we'll, the guy get on the phone, you know, we'll talk, whatever. And usually, it's easy, you know, just an easy fix. We're not, we're not trying to stop people from bringing in household trash. And I know people that are contractors, but they got a house to pay the assessment. They should have a right to get in there, too. What we're trying to curb is people coming in, you know, just abusing it with them.
That's another thing, that's another thing, uh, what you referenced, who was a church changed all her carpet, and Bad Cop told him to cart it. The church, the gentleman that did the carpet for Bad Cop had installed it, he doesn't have a sign on his truck, as a contractor.
He does, huh?
He just got a, he just got a regular pickup truck. He filed all the carpet from the church in the pickup, all of it to the site in Shady Grove. And, um, he has, he lives in the county, he, he could legally haul it, truckload, up there to the site, you know. But he, you know, he could carry it to Greenville, but it was easier to go to, because he brought it to Shady Grove, the church, so he went up there and dumped it. I went to Bad Cop myself, talked to the owner, and said, would you please tell your contractors from now on, if you do a commercial job, tell them to carry to Greenville? And she, and the lady said they would. And I just, I did that on my own, just because that's what needs to happen. She needed to understand what, what situation she was putting us in, the county, and all the people in the county. But if he don't have a sign, there's no way up here, his people to know that he's a contractor, he could bring freight truck load to cart it up there from a shirt, and nobody know, don't know what to give. So they have to just let him, let him dump it. They can't just look at the load and say, well, you look like this as a contractor, y'all, you know, but they gonna...
Can ask them?
I think that's what he's saying, that the memo stated was to ask them. But I think it's...
And he, and he asked them to ask them, you know, if that's what he did, yeah. But you're gonna end up with some of that no matter what, you know, because you got all kind of people around town, you got painters, you got sheepdog people, they don't have signs on their trucks.
I have a problem with that, but I think they also generate household trash, so there, our case is that they have a reason to be at that site, they're paying the assessment of...
I'm not trying to keep those people away, but it's very hard to...
It, it's, it's almost impossible, the police let completely, you just do the basic game with it. I saw a fellow dumping a bunch of tile, I'm talking about a trailer load of tile, busted tile, concrete pieces and all that. It had to then come out of a motel, or a swimming pool, or something, it was, I mean, a trailer load of tile. Uh, but, you know, he was, and I quit, I, it coughed, and I quit, and I said, you're a contractor, see, I like, I, you know, and I didn't ask you where you got that from, or who was laying tile for, but he had a trailer load of tile and concrete, and pieces, steel and all that stuff. But, you know, I just asked him whether he's a contractor, and he said, whoops, that's where he for living, you know. But that's before Gary admitted to the people, that was, you know, that was several months. But that's before Gary had mentioned to the people, that was, you know, that was several months ago.
Well, I think this is just common sense for whoever's working in the roll-off. If it's household garbage and they've got a sticker or a card, they get it dumped. But if they've got any C and D, I think that, I don't believe there's anything wrong to ask them if they're a contractor, they're working for somebody else. They try to identify those people.
And that's, I believe what the memo said, is just, but, you know, I think it's going to be, it's going, it's a learning curve and it's not going to be perfect. And something that Gary and I have discussed is someone may accidentally, you know, get turned away, and that's why all they have to do is call if there's any question.
And, you know, just like what he's talking about, if, if this person shows back up again with such as that, then you know that he's, he's, you know, that's part of his job as a contractor. But now, you might want to think about, you know, they'll get smart and they'll say, well, next time I'm going to Harrison Blue. And you've got to have a way, maybe with communication, that you've had John Doe that went to Carlton and he had a load of tile and this is his vehicle and everything and just, and everybody at the roll-off knows that this is a person to be looking for, maybe, you know.
Well, and that's why we said, even if the vehicle isn't marked, just, just ask them. And I think we'll get to a point where we're able to maybe a little easier identify.
There have been people in the last week or so, Zed called me and said, maybe getting a call from this guy, but he told me he was a contractor, I sent him one down the road. So, it's, it's.
They're gonna get into the word, and once they ask a contractor a couple of times, they're gonna come in and do the same thing and ask them, "Are you a contractor?" And they say, "No."
Well, you'll, you'll soon identify these people though.
Yeah, what you gonna do? What are they gonna do when they say, "No," what are they gonna do, just tell them they can't dump anyway?
Well, that's why we need another mechanism to deal with C and D. And, and these large limbs. It's not, it's not just trying to keep contractors out, but we need a way to, to generate revenue to collect and dispose of construction debris and, and large limbs. And then, and, and because resident, I mean, we should not, from what I understand, we should not be using the revenue from the residential assessment to collect and dispose of any C and D, whether it's a resident or it's a contractor. We just haven't quite gotten to the point where we've been able to come up with a good way to handle that.
What you saying, we can say no more C and D thought. And there would be legal to do that, isn't that right, Mr. Johnson? And I mean, that'd be a pretty big pill for all.
There's many counties over there, most counties are probably doing that.
Hold on, now.
I know at Lake City, that, at their transfer station, if you come in there and you have a mixed load like C and D or whatever, I think they charge you like a hundred dollars a ton just to drop that in there. And that curbs them from coming in there with that, it stops it at that point.
Do you know if.
I mean, we just could tell them, no, I mean, we have stuff slaying all over this county. Or we did what, C and D. Fair thing. So, I think just start from one transfer station, and what we would need to do, have one truck location and whether it was Carlton or this ten acre that Commissioner Moody mentioned earlier.
You're gonna need to, I need to clean it.
And things like that, they would say, you know, they would leave it in.
You'd have to have, you'd have to have a slab to dump that stuff on where they could take the front end loads and loads without digging into the dirt. You know? And there's, there's a slab at the airport, that's not being used for anything when the mold slapped. Uh, you know? Would be, I don't know, but then that turns into, would FAA let us use that?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I don't think that's an option.
You're pretty specific about what we cannot do.
You get in trouble for asking. There's some possibilities there in respect to the tonnage of C and D and the cost. I mean, are, are we anywhere closer to understanding if we were to accept that, um, the, the cost of it would be affiliated with it?
Unless, unless we can get that study done over there and get a percentage and.
I think that's what we need to really.
I don't know how accurate the percentage would be if you did a weeks, it, it'd probably give you some idea. It'd probably be close, you know, if it's saying thirty percent C and D in them loads, that'd give you an idea what you're, you know, we could run a tonnage and just, you know, multiply it out with thirty percent, look at it.
Come on, I think it, it would be more acceptable to have that option if you were to pay for it versus just oh, you've got to transfer it to X location. I mean, I, for me, I would rather have the option, even if I had to pay a little bit for it, versus not having the option at all and have to go an hour one way with fuel costs on the rise.
Well, the other option is, you, you folks could run a container.
Right, and so if I have that kind of quantity, yes, and if I only have, if I'm looking at a year's C and D, I know I'm gonna have this project, I, I'm not gonna have enough for a container. So it would be more acceptable on my budget if I were in that kind of project to say, I can pay you thirty dollars, if it's thirty dollars a ton, if you want to save for a pickup truck, and not have to have a container, because I don't have that kind of volume. But at least I still have the option, if I'm paying thirty dollars to put it on that site and not paying sixty dollars plus my time burning a tank of gas with the cost to go to where this location might be. So, I'm just kind of looking at the logistics in the county, whether it be at ninety-eight fourteen or in Ste. Axol. Either, either way you look at that, if you cut that option out from underneath the residents, that's, that's really not affordable, so you, it may be more people to take the risk to dump it off somewhere around the world.
I wasn't suggesting.
I suggested that, uh, no.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that we just cut anybody off. I think we, what we've been struggling with for quite some time is how to collect money outside, revenue outside of the assessment. I, I, I wasn't suggesting that we just cut people off. We just haven't been able to come to, um, to come up with a good solution at this point for, for handling that type of debris.
That gentleman that was from Michigan that I helped unload that trailer load of oak limbs, he moved to Taylor County and bought a new property just recently. And he was, I was unloading stuff and I walked over and seen the man, he had a trailer load of oak limbs cut up about three foot long, anywhere from two inches to four inches, whole load, just, it was a beautiful load of firewood from somebody, but he was putting it in the, in the dumpster. I walked over and helped him and I saw his tag and I said, "Austin, just passing through, or you, you live here?" He said, he just bought a place and he was, you know, cleaning it up, trimming trees up. And I said, "Well, what?" I said, "You, you can be the owner of the place here now, you can dump this here." And he said, "Yeah." And I said, "What was, what would that cost you where you come from?" He said, "If you brought one limb or a truckload of limbs, it's six dollars." Un, unquestioned, you have to pay six dollars. If it was one piece of wood or a truckload of wood, it was six dollars. Everybody come in there with any kind of, any kind of thing, had to pay six dollars.
And that kind of, none of them worked in the state of Kansas?
I mean.
I'm, I'm willing to start somewhere.
I mean, we got, we, like Mr. Wong said, we've got to get to that point we were at. We take y'all around, we got to get to that point, we already at that point.
Sure.
I mean, we're already at the point, we got to do something. And, I mean, we, we've talked this thing and talked it dead already today again. And we've got to make a decision get to the point to handle what, if we're spending the money and hiring the people and working, we need to pay them. I mean, the people gonna say, well, we already done went up on one seventy-eight, you know, now what do you want, you know, to charge it? So, I mean, that's, that's a tough decision making, I mean, I don't say that's right, men and women make it, but we need, we've got to, we've got to look at this thing closely, we need to look at it, we don't need to just keep putting it down, we need to work at it, or, you know, just like we are now discussing all of it. But that, one every other day that we talked about, I don't think people have any problem with that.
But you, you understand, if we go three twelve-hour days and you're at seven, ten-hour days, is that fair, Mr. Wong Pope? Are those sites that are seven days, ten hours?
What's your question?
What's the question?
What I'm saying is, if you cut it to every other day or three days, you're gonna go nearly to half your hours. You're gonna go seventy, if it's seven, ten-hour days, to thirty-six. We've got issues that we're trying to work through with where we're at.
Nope.
And I'm not against saving money. If that works, I'm, I'm just saying you're gonna cut your. No, I, I mean, I'm open to it, but I'm also.
They're gonna have to work, they're gonna have to work more though, you're gonna have to be hauling containers the whole time.
I, I mean, I'm just trying to look at the logistics. I'm not opposed to it, I'm willing to try. But I'm also really trying to analyze and see that we're, you know, we've been working at seventy hours and then having our drivers work accordingly.
All the sites are gonna work, all the sites are gonna work, you know, all the time, it's only part of the day. Just like Bernard Johnson, they only opened after an afternoon. That's every, every day in the year. You know, it's just a half a day. And, I mean, and that's what really, that's why I don't get a lot of business, on the weekends it does, but, you know, it gets, it gets a certain amount during the week, but most it's just the weekend. You know? Closing Sunday, every Sunday would be a good start and we can get an ideal run. I mean, I mean, that would be.
Let's do this, let's do this study and see which day is the slowest day.
Bernard Johnson's site, it opened from what time? Twelve o'clock to seven?
The Bernard Johnson?
Yes.
I think it's true. What was the time?
All seven, it first to change.
To six.
It's to six, yeah. Daylight, does anybody know, are they gonna do daylight at seven's time, or does anybody heard, or they gonna?
I haven't heard that it's been revealed, but is that your question? I haven't heard that. Okay, so I just need to bring back the information you requested.
It is, or, we'll give us something to go on anyway.
November the sixth, daylight saving time, this, um, November the sixth. According to my.
Do you wish to schedule another workshop, or do you want to wait until our meeting next week? Because I have, we have some other items we need to discuss as far as scheduling.
I think we should keep these meetings to discuss just solid waste, so we can.
Yes, no, my question was, do you want to schedule the next workshop now, or do you want to wait until? Um, because we need to have a special meeting on October twenty-fifth. And I also would like sometime in November to bring a state of the county presentation to the board. And, um, y'all, before the end of the year, we need to schedule ethics training if you have not done that yet. So just, um, some other um, items that we need to schedule.
Can you do that and have it here so everybody can come and do it all at one time and hit it and done with?
If we could, if we could do that, I mean, it'd be better.
For what?
We need, we need to get the ethics forward behind it.
Yeah, uh, you know.
Pretty possible.
Special meeting is unfortunate, but.
Uh, the twenty-fifth, we would like to have a special meeting, um, six o'clock to, in the workshop to follow. So do you want to consider maybe having another solid waste workshop, maybe the first week of November? Gary, can we get all that done by the first week of November, you think?
If you've got to decide, if you're gonna do the study, how long are you gonna take it for? And then, you know, you've got to have time to make a conclusion with what you've got.
Be going in a week, I know that. Probably two weeks, steady.
I would think so.
Um, also, I committed to a week, they felt like they, because they said they would help us. The landfill said they would help us and they needed us to, um, have one employee for, spend a week with them. Now, I'm assuming that means five days, if it means six.
I feel like it's rather two weeks rather than a week.
Yeah, if you're gonna collect data, you want to make sure that you're, you're getting enough of data and.
I can ask, right, I can ask, I mean, they. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant at Oncela landfill, I'm sorry, okay.
Well, we're gonna do.
Okay, yes ma'am, I got you. Okay, so, um, we have a meeting on the eighteenth. We have a special meeting and a workshop on the twenty-fifth. So, maybe on the eighteenth.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We got a special meeting, our regular meeting's on the eighteenth.
Yes, sir. And then, the workshop is the twenty-fifth. We want to have a special meeting at six o'clock and a workshop to follow, so it would still be at six o'clock. So, the two, so, there's three dates we need to look at outside of the regular meetings. One is ethics training, one is another solid waste workshop, and I would like to schedule maybe in November, a state of the county presentation, and that usually takes a couple of hours.
I was thinking, we could do ethics training.
I will reach out to, um, to Ms. Barrettson tomorrow. I, I mean, I think I just, we just need to come up with a date and, and just coordinate it with her.
We could do that in here, just like we did before.
As far as I know, now I'll double check. But I'll, I'll reach out to her and ask about that. So, so on the eighteenth, we can discuss these dates? Okay.
State of the county, that, that needs to be a special meeting, I mean, for the November workshop work for that? Was there going to be others?
No, we could do it, um, the November, well, it depends on Thanksgiving, let me look at those dates.
I'm looking at third, oh, Tuesday, if, I remember. And then next week is Thanksgiving meeting.
I'll look at our approved calendar and see if we, what date we had the November workshop scheduled. So I'll bring that back to, I'll be next week.
It would hurt, I'm saying, for that meeting on, um, November the twenty-second at night to be moved up a week.
Yeah, I'll be, that's what we'd like to do. I'll be out.
I'll be out on a big thing.
Of November, now remember, we have reorganization, the second meeting in November, so I'll bring the calendar back to y'all next week.
I'll be out on a big thing.
You going, hunting, you going on your big trip, the big thing?
I always go every year, big thing. I'm there on a big thing.
So if, if you all can kind of look at your October and November calendars, we'll see if we can get all this scheduled. If we need to put off the state of the county until, you know, after Thanksgiving, I mean, that would be fine too.
Maybe jump in at Christmas.
Well, it, it won't take long. I mean, and we could do it maybe during the November workshop. I mean, y'all don't have to take any action. And I don't know if any particular workshop items in November that we're planning right now. I mean, that can change.
Ethics session is eight hours, four minutes, six.
Sir.
Ethics session, that's supposed to be eight hours?
No, oh, no, four. But I, it seems like last year it didn't take quite that long, did it? Was it a full four hours?
At least we keep it there most of that time.
But we didn't, I don't think we had any breaks. That's why I'm wondering if we got done a little bit quicker.
We got done a little bit early.
Yeah.
All right. Can you say this? You have nothing else?
Yes, sir.
You want it? Okay. So we're done. These thoughts are done. Well done.